To order, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here. Public comment will be on the, before the issue itself. Are you all here for issue three or four? Okay, I'm sorry, three is the massage parlor.
That must be why they're here.
I can comment on that.
And four is the Boulevard Beautification.
I would have more to do with four.
Okay.
And five A.
Oh, okay. Would you mind waiting for four? We'll do three first. Does it matter? Why don't we just do with, go with four first? Since you guys are here.
You're talking now?
Yeah, we'll take public comment. Randy, want to go first, or you want to go first?
Randy, you go first. Because yours is not really a very hard, you'll have to do it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm Randy Hill at 12042 Paseo Bonita in Los Alamos. I'm here tonight to express my sincere gratitude for Shelley Hasselbrink, running for a queen candidate for the Los Alamos Education Foundation. I feel she took a great leadership role in bridging the values of the entire community, and I'm extremely grateful. I know that she had to step way out of her comfort zone to do that, and was very selfless and done in true service to our community. And I'd like to thank you all for your efforts to make our community a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. You could come every meeting if you wanted. Next.
Hi, I'm Sherri Cropp, and I'm the Superintendent for Los Alamos Unified, and I too want to say thank you to Shelley Hasselbrink, and I know that one of the common interests that the city and the district have is that we really want this community to be the best place to live for young people and all of us veteran people as well. So Shelley, really thank you, and I know that that was supported by many of you as well, so we really appreciate that. And then also, I wanted to take a couple minutes and talk about our adult transition program. I briefly spoke to Brett about this, but it was so brief back in December, I didn't certainly get clarity or check for understanding. And we also had two public board workshops on our adult transition program on November 18th and December 9th. And an adult transition program is really a special education program. So in a public school system, if kids are diagnosed with a moderate to severe learning disability, they're on an individualized education plan, and you have a responsibility to try to locate these children at the age of three. And if they then enter our school system and they are on a non-diploma track, you have the responsibility to educate them until they're 22. So not everyone really understands what that means. So we have currently 17 students that we are required to educate until the age of 22, and they are, again, they're moderate to severe special education students on an IEP, Individualized Education Plan. And part of that program has to include job training. And so right now, we have them out in the community. We have, we're modernizing, so it's a little bit precarious right now. But they also have classroom space, a makeshift house, so they learn how to make a bed, do laundry, cook a meal, that kind of a thing. And then for job training, we use some community outreach and community, like the Alamos, Los Alamos Medical Center works with some of our students, et cetera. And so it's growing quickly. So next year, we anticipate 20 students, 22 students, and we are going to have at least 30 by the 2016-17 school year. And so the staff have been talking for over a year about how are we going to serve these kids, and that they're adults then, but they're still our kids, our students. How are we going to serve them as they grow and get them the job training? So after talking about this in two public workshops, we are going to have our adult transition program located where currently our auxiliary is. And so at that site, we're going to have classroom space and teach kids things like, which we're very excited about, things like custodial jobs. That's where our warehouse is and where we store things, how to unload containers, stack them. And we're also going to have issues with buses and cleaning rooms and cleaning the insides of buses, all of those. So in the classroom, they'll learn, and all the kids will cycle in and out there. And so, excuse me? Oh, and so I just wanted to let the council know. And then we did have hopes of discussing this at our city district working meeting, which was originally scheduled for January 30th. And no problem, we both do it, but that had to be postponed. There were some conflicts, which was fine, so it got postponed, and we actually didn't meet until today. And then we found out a week or two ago that we could not put this on the agenda, so I wasn't able to share that, and I want to make sure that everyone understands about what an adult transition program is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're always welcome. Anyone else? Josh?
Hi, my name is Josh Wilson. I'm acting today as the Chairman of Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm speaking the Cattella, Los Alamos Corridor's Improvement Project. On behalf of the chamber, we are in support of this program. We share the same concerns as other residents do about the traffic mitigation for the area, but the chamber is excited. We want to be partners with this, and we really hope after, you know, this process started in 2009, and then 2011 with the studies, that now, here in 2015, we've come, we start seeing this project be fulfilled. So really encourage the council, and we're hoping that we can move this along, and we can be partners in this in the future about this project going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm done. Okay, thank you all. Want to go back to number three in the public hearing? The extension of emergency ordinance adopting the citywide moratorium on the establishment expansion, intensification or relocation of new and existing massage establishments and massage practitioners. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a second ordinance that allows you to extend the ordinance to provide a moratorium on massage businesses for another 10-plus months. Allows us to go through the planning commission and tweak our future ordinances and our business license code and our section of our code that pertains to massage establishments as well as massage business operations. And to make sure that it is tight, make sure it meets the state codes and guidelines, and make sure that it is similar in nature to our neighboring ones to not make us more vulnerable than maybe our neighbors might be. So it allows us a 10-month cooling-off period. We don't think it's going to last 10 months to get this to the planning commission or the city council, but right now, we're asking for that extension of that 10 months. It is a public hearing, so you would have to open the public hearing, take any necessary testimony, then if appropriate, you would adopt the ordinance.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Josh? No? Nobody wants to speak? So we'll go back, come back to the council. Any comments? No? Any motions?
I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
Motion being to waive the reading and adopt ordinance number 2015-02. This requires a four-fifths vote.
That's my motion.
Second?
Seven?
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? No? Pass is five-zero. Go on to number four. Los Alamos Boulevard Beautification. You up again, Stephen?
He will be in one moment. I just want to introduce the item. Mayor and City Council, this is a discussion, a workshop-type discussion tonight, based on the direction from the City Council when we brought this item forward to you for the scope of services, which will eventually get incorporated into a request for proposal. Council wanted to kind of stop and look and review this project and bring everyone up to date on where we are and where we've been, and seek direction from the council tonight on the next steps. And so we have prepared information in your staff report that is designed to kind of bring everyone up to date to this point in time, and we are looking for healthy discussion and feedback from the council tonight before we take our next steps. With that, Stephen Mendoza, the Community Development and Public Works Director, will do the staff presentation.
Thank you, Brett. Mayor and members of the City Council, Los Alamos Boulevard corridor provides a window to Los Alamos for consumers, potential businesses, and future residents. 30,000 vehicles a day travel along this half-mile corridor that runs between Cerritos and Cattella. Giving its strategic location, the Boulevard offers an opportunity of attracting business and mixed-use development. In 2009, staff has been working on this since 2009, we saw this potential in Los Alamos Boulevard. We applied for what's called a Compass Blueprint Grant with SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. We were lucky enough to be awarded that grant, and then SCAG hired a consultant for us to use and devised a commercial corridor plan that met SCAG's needs. During the middle of the outreach for that corridor plan, we kind of realized that Cattella may end up being what Cattella is, but we discovered a lot of potential on Los Alamos Boulevard. And Los Alamos Boulevard is a viable commercial corridor that was ripe for improvement, ripe for investment, both from the public side and the private side, and so the report ended up taking its own direction in that area. The City Council embraced the results of that demonstration project. Some of you may remember, you'll see down on the table, that big, large document, 11 by 17. You probably remember that document and how it was embraced. Everyone was excited. They didn't want to sit on a shelf, and they wanted, we wanted to move forward on a vision for Los Alamos Boulevard. During the September 2010 meeting, the City Council was presented the phase and the project, and it was broken down into phases, five phases, and we were authorized to start phase number one, which was the outreach phase and design phase. During the January 2011 meeting, the council was advised the status of the downtown project and the public outreach, and the council then authorized $90,000 to start phase two and three. During that March 2011 meeting, the City Council was provided a status of the plan, and that's when we came up with these conceptuals. You'll see the big horizontal drawings over here to the left of the screen. One showed the curvilinear plan, and one showed a straight plan. The curvilinear randomly went towards certain properties and away from other properties without being too specific of which properties they would go, and then the straight one, the one on the top, just went straight down the Boulevard. In 2013, a traffic study was done and presented to the Traffic Commission. It included the analysis of the traffic circulation and the loss of parking versus parking gain, right Dave? Okay. And then in 2011, the council denied the award of a contract to do the public outreach, and the projects had no activity since that time. Well, as you know, many phases have changed. City Council has changed, city management has changed a bit, and we thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring this back to City Council to get some more input before we went any further. You'll see a lot of information in the staff report regarding why we think the Boulevard is worth an investment. You see a lot of information in the staff report of why we think improvements would then add to it, and then I'll go through a small little plan here. Again, we have the straight version and the curvilinear version of a Los Alamos Boulevard improvement plan. Then you have the nuts and bolts of it. Really, what is it? When you get down to the brass tacks, it really is a capital improvement plan. It's a capital improvement plan that creates what, though? Where's your shopping list? What are you choosing from, and what's the cost of that? Well, right now, we're kind of creating a one-stop-shop list of selection items to make the Boulevard more beautiful, including center medians of different types. Crosswalks, lush center medians, street furniture planters and tree wells on the side panels. You see wayfinding signage to create a more beautiful Boulevard and easily identified Boulevard, and also to show where the locations of these things are. You'll probably see the most pronounced example of this in Newport Beach. You'll see there, it's a blue theme there, and you'll see there's going to post offices, school sites, park sites, any sites the public. Sometimes you'll add churches to the mix, just to help people visiting your town. A town that's wrapped around tourism will take this to a different level than maybe our town might. And then branding and identity. What really is the vision for the Boulevard? And the benefits of creating branding? You'll see that in the staff report. Here's something that El Cajon did. Actually, both of these examples are El Cajon. And you'll see these in San Diego, you'll see these in historic districts throughout the United States of America and Europe, and you'll see it providing a gateway, setting a theme, setting an identity for the area. You know, we talked about the bridge identity before of setting the tone through bridges as separating kids from cars. We always show that as a way to really identify the city and start branding the city. Again, more branding examples of what some cities have done to create a district. And again, here's the cross-section of the straight and curvilinear example of each lane width. This has sidewalks widened, this has center medians at 11 feet. You'll see trees at the center median and on the panels, and you'll see more public spaces on the side. With the amount of rideaway that we have on Los Alamos Boulevard, this is feasible one day. We don't think that would be phase one. We think that might be phase two, but you certainly don't want to do anything in phase one that prevents you from doing such a phase in the future. And we believe beginning the discussions regarding center medians, lighting in the center medians doesn't take away from your ultimate vision. It just gets the project started or gets the improvements started along Los Alamos Boulevard. Here's the original configuration. One of the things we pointed out in the staff report is several of the goals of the future general plan that'll be coming forward talk about an attractive and pedestrian-friendly town center that serves as the heart of the community, and various policies to help implement that. You'll see the policies continue towards outside dining, vertical mixed-use, diverse business and activities. You'll see economic policies, distinct shopping and entertainment corridors, districts. And so this is what the Planning Commission and the joint commissions have been working on to package this up. So such an improvement project helps meet goals that have already been vetted by the public. Quality retail environments, public-private partnerships, and diversification. These are all policies that are in the future general plan, even though the mobility and circulation element talks about a Los Alamos Boulevard that's connected, that has connectivity, and it promotes safe and efficient movement of people and goods. With that, you wanted this workshop before we began any outreach, and that was a $40,000 expenditure of outreach. We had brought the RFP to you at a previous City Council meeting. We haven't released that RFP until we worked on this workshop. So with that, that's my introduction to the project. I may be assuming you know more about the project than I remember, but I think all of you are pretty up to speed on what the original project considered. And with that, Dave Hunt is here, Tom is here, and I am here if you have any questions.
Okay. I'd like to suggest as we maybe ask our questions first, and then everybody kind of outline what they're thinking of going forward. If I could, did you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you missed public speaking, so jump in now.
Sorry, I spoke again last night. Clearly, I've made my voice known on this. This was killed in 2011 and should remain pretty much dead until maybe after the general plan, and considering what we heard at the last City Council meeting about our funding and all the surprises we have now with Calpers and everything else, I really don't think 40,000, 140,000, or whatever the number is that's going to be popping up is worthwhile being spent on a street where, if I checked, last time I looked, Radio Shack just closed, and I think that might be one of the very few empty buildings on that Boulevard. The rest of the Boulevard, I believe, is pretty much rented out. It's already built out, and it has tenants. I believe Radio Shack just filed bankruptcy, so they're gone, and the smoke shop next to them, I'm not sure if it's still there. But most of the buildings in this Boulevard are already occupied. We've got a business community down there. We don't have parking, but that's a citywide problem, and I don't think what they're doing is addressing that. I do know we have that open space that everyone wants to put houses in, but no one wants to put commercial property or anything that would be business-oriented in. And we're, again, talking about fixing up a street that if we slow down traffic on it, it's the traffic from our neighbors in Seal Beach, Rossmore, and South Los Al who twice a day travel it to go to the high school. And so we're talking about slowing down our major thoroughfare, whether it be meandering the road or shortening it and reducing it, when we should be thinking about how to get traffic through the city, because the people who go there know what's there. We all know about the 7-Eleven, we know about all the businesses that are down there. We pass them every day. It's not like we're talking about bringing new business here. We're not talking about extending the commercial zone to the nonprofit area or to the houses. We're talking about pouring money that we don't have into something we don't really need right now. We may need it in the future, and we can plan for it there, but I don't think putting money we don't have into this right now is a wise use of our funds. As Councilman Edgar has said many a time, we have to be stewards of our money, and we don't have it. We just got told we got Calpers, surprise. That's where our money should be going, not on this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to begin?
I'd like to begin.
Please.
I'm very excited to see this project come back. Long time in the making, and I really think that now is the right time. Couple of comments, really four main areas. This is a commercial corridor that has significant opportunity for revenue and for the future. And I think really my points in the last budget meetings have been that we were in a situation where our revenue is fixed, and we need to do something to be able to change that revenue line, and so I do think that this is a part of that formula. This project was always envisioned from the very beginning to be a part of a lot of other stuff that's going on in the city. And, you know, when this project was announced, and we started going down this direction, fairly quickly thereafter, the Los Al Medical Center project kickoff, we had, you know, three or four big projects that went in, CVS, the Chase Banks, 7-Eleven. A lot of stuff started happening, and I don't naively connect these all to us making the motion that we would like to do this downtown project, but I think that when people started seeing the hospital spend $75 million on a new parking structure, psychologically, we started thinking, you know what, we need to start doing stuff. And I've always said that when you look around to the neighboring cities, including Hawaiian Gardens, we have fallen behind, and we need to catch up. The business problem here, you know, a lot of people, even the way it's agendized, is called the Beautification Project, but that's really incorrect. The real business problem here is that we have an oversized street called Los Al Boulevard, and it's been substantiated in a study that basically said that you have an opportunity to reconfigure that corridor to get more out of it. Even when you look at the traffic studies that have been completed, or the traffic say that was completed and never fully disclosed, you will see that even investing in that corridor to help a couple of key business drivers, of which I'll talk about in a minute, one of the most important things that improves is circulation, and there's, you know, folks that end up going back and forth twice a day for their kids at high school, but on top of that, other circulation that affects the citizens of this city, you know, 100% of the time. You know, if you, if you look at this, you know, a part of this, and just as an example seeking and envision kind of what this project's supposed to be, you know, if you just imagine that you're at Green Street Interior and you want to walk across the street to have dinner at Shenandoah, do it. Go do that one day, and see how odd that is. You need to start stretching, you get ready, and you start the walk. And when you do that, you get to the intersection there at Sausalito and Los Al, and you look across how far that is across that street, and then you realize there's a lot of stuff going on, and people are coming in fairly quickly, but you need to make it across. The whole way that this thing is configured for circulation and pedestrian traffic is where people are missing the economic opportunity. You don't want to put a business that requires pedestrian traffic in a scenario that has no pedestrian capability. So the business problem, again, is investing in this, reconfiguring this part of Los Alamos. It's really trying to change the business types that potentially could end up being there. I'd also say that the traffic flow, the circulation, and all the commensurate things that go with that are really important, but, but again, I think that that is something that really, at the beginning, is something that we focus on, and it quite honestly is how the Traffic Commission and some of the other commissions, as we went through this, looked at the different, two different designs, really with that in mind. Lastly, the timing, you know, is it important now to take this project on at this point? If we had $15 million today, it would take us three to five years to get a project done. There's a lot of work that's required before you go spend money. The planning itself, tonight, the beginning of the stakeholder management process of going with our community, letting them know one more time, a reminder, this is a long process. You can't go out and try to take the community down a direction that this has been in place for many years and think that you can do it. So if we had the money right now, we could not do this for many years. So this isn't something we're going to go out tomorrow and spend money we don't have. This is something that we are trying to take, just like we did the general plan, we took $150,000 to $300,000 general plan update, and instead of paying that money in one year to get it done, we actually spread it out over three to five years. We involved the Planning Commission to really carry the water on that, and it's starting to come to fruition. But that was something that we were all a part of since 2009, too, and it's 2015. So again, probably, I don't have any questions. I think probably more just a direction that I'm, where I'm specifically at of one of five, is that I think the timing is really important to start. Again, I don't think it happens tomorrow. We've got a long road ahead of us. This is the beginning of trying to re-educate the community on what it is. And, and you know what, I, you know, applaud people like JM that come and represent different perspectives of this. The chamber came earlier and said, hey, we completely support it. That's what this is about, is to get everybody's perspective. So I'm very excited for this moving forward, and we really appreciate the opportunity to work with staff on this. Thank you.
Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So question to staff, so try and, I guess, bound this whole activity here, if I remember. So the first go-around, it was 90,000 allocated, of which 40,000 was basically already expended, correct? So really talking about 50,000 to do the next phase, which is phase three, I think, in your plan, correct?
Well, we moved away from that phasing unless council gives us direction tonight to move back to that phase.
Okay, so really, so we're still talking $50,000 appropriation to go back and, I guess, revisit the plans that were established back in 2011?
The current budget includes $40,000 for outreach.
Okay. So it's $40,000 is the boundary in terms of dollars, and then the tasking is, I guess, is what?
You know, and that's where it's a little cloudy, is the outreach appropriate to gain public input to bring back to the City Council at a later date?
Okay. So 40,000 is going to get me what?
It's going to get you, it's going to get you a documented, similar to that, a document that creates the go or no-go based on public input.
But what happened to the, what happened to the other 40,000 that was already sunk?
Steve, was that in engineering?
It was in the traffic study, and it was in the preliminary design work that we laid out and did some cost estimates on.
Say that again?
There was money spent on the traffic study for the Boulevard, and then also on some conceptual design work that you see at exhibits in the back, to kind of give a bigger picture and look at it and come up with a more detailed cost estimate, because this was done on a very high-level type of looking at it.
So, and then the community outreach would have been based on both the traffic study and the conceptual drawings? Is that kind of what, back in 2011?
That's correct.
And then the traffic study, it's kind of fuzzy to me in certain ways, but I guess it was like double left-turn lanes on Cerritos northbound, or Los Al northbound at Cerritos, that was kind of part of the study, those impacts?
The study basically said the impacts are...
The study basically said the impacts are at Catala and Los Al. Boulevard, and Cerritos and Los Al. Boulevard, that both intersections needed improvements to help the flow of traffic. Those were the two bottlenecks, which we all, we do know that. But it did recommendations on, you know, right turn lanes and double left turn lanes, and it's all spelled out into there, and what it came up with.
But that was part of the mitigation, right, to increase, as Councilmember Edgar said, to, I guess, improve circulation, right?
Well, what we did is we gave them the conceptual layout, and say, if we built this, what other recommendations would you want to see to make the traffic flow better? And they analyzed all the intersections that are out in there, and compared them to the existing condition, and projected them out to 2035, look to those conditions, and actually compared it to making it a six-lane also versus a four-lane, just so we could see the whole pros and cons. Because, you know, in the existing general plan, it shows that someday be in a six-lane, you know, highway out there.
Right. So refresh my memory then, on the six-lane concept back in 2011, did the circulation improve based on that, or did it decrease? Was it more of a negative impact?
Adding the three lanes in each direction?
Yeah.
It improved the flow of traffic, yes, because you're adding more straight-through traffic and getting, and it was basically done to get the flow through the city, not going to businesses. It was to get the 30,000 cars per day to go from one end to the other through the section out there. And that was rejected back in 2008 by the local businesses about not wanting a third lane right next to their curb and gutter with cars going 40 miles an hour. You know, so there's a lot of activity towards that.
So when that happened, I would just mention that to Stephen earlier today, that was when Derek was the city engineer, and then I was on the Traffic Commission at the time, and we had actually gone through some great pains and public hearings and what have you, to actually look at expanding that to three lanes each way. And I-
You had money for it also?
Yeah, it was Measure M monies, right? It was all set, and it was, I think it was going to be fully funded, the entire cost.
Yeah, it was roughly $500,000 to put median islands in there, and then restriped the lanes.
I thought it was more restriping, I didn't realize it was median, I don't remember the median.
There was median islands in there, too. Those got rejected also.
But, but all that said, so I thought that the reason that did not get funded or failed is the lack of bike lanes. So it was, it was, it was local businesses that said that they don't want capacity through the city?
From the documents that I read, and talking to Bill Huber, who tried to carry it through after Derek left, he basically said it was the two items that really hurt was the traffic right next to the curb face going full speed, and the businesses didn't want the restriction of left turns anywhere in the street to go to their businesses. So that was a big issue.
Okay, that would have been prevented, that would have been caused by medians, then?
Right.
Okay.
Which helped the flow of traffic by putting median islands in. It makes the traffic flow better, because you don't have people making left turns across other traffic.
So memory, what I recall about that prior plan to put the striping in was, the reason we could do it under that measurement budget that was allocated, the money that was granted, is that it wasn't any construction, it was just restriping the roads. So I don't remember anything about a median in that.
It was a special fund that we, the city applied for, to get money. It wasn't part of your fair share, Measure M money that you get.
Right, right.
It was a special fund, and it was for median islands and that. And so when the striping got canceled by the businesses, Bill Huber went back to OCTA, and then had a revised plan approved just for the median islands to go in. And then he tried to get that going, and then that got rejected by the businesses, and then he canceled the whole project. That happened before I got here, or right when I got here in 2010, January 2010.
So my frustration with that whole process, now finding out about this, the only thing I really wanted out of that project is over there on the corner of Florista and Los Al. Boulevard, heading southbound, that sort of quasi pork, was it pork chop bone, whatever, right turn only? Because that was, to me, was probably one of the most dangerous right turns, because you don't know what the driver on to your right is going to do. So that was delayed for, since 2008, because of the street repainting and median. So I guess I'm really kind of surprised about the fact that businesses are rejecting plans, that the Traffic Commission at that time had basically advanced its way to improve traffic flow, right?
Correct.
Okay. So now we have the study that says, two lanes in a curvy linear kind of way does not impair current traffic?
Correct.
Okay. But it does slow it down?
No. It doesn't slow the traffic down.
Okay, so...
It actually helps the traffic flow better, having the median islands in there, like I say, preventing left turns and stuff along the way, preventing some cross-traffic.
Okay.
Few of the streets, we actually are preventing left turns from the side streets to go into the Boulevard. All that helps the flow of traffic go better.
It provides a smooth direction. When you're going down a Boulevard, Los Al. Boulevard, and coming out of Gonal, you get darted at by 20 different cars coming different directions. You're not sure where the traffic's coming from. Center medians allow you to look one way and know where you're expecting traffic to come from. Right now, you don't have that on Los Al. Al. Meadows Boulevard. There's no, there's no expectation of where that opposing traffic is coming from.
And you've got to remember, you have two lanes in each direction now, that go all the way through. And you have a bunch of third lane that start and stop, but maybe they're right turns. And so your main flow is these two lanes.
And then there's, there's the median, which has the dotted yellow lines, or the broken yellow lines, that allows someone to enter and exit the median, too. Okay. Well, okay, with that, I'll just pass back to you. Maybe you have some other questions after discussion.
Dean?
I was off council during part of this, so some of it I didn't get, and I'm getting brought up to speed at this particular point. I concur with what Councilman Edgar said about the option for businesses in the city to provide more services for citizens. I also concur that if we don't do something, nothing's ever going to happen, because it's going to require us taking that first step to try and create that. It's quite clear from staff report that there's been work done, both from the SCAG study and the initial work that was done, that has some plans out there. At the time this came up, and we talked about a public workshop, one of the things I pressed for was a workshop for council to kind of refresh everybody where we were and what was going on in the process of moving forward. I'm not sure exactly, although there's been reference that the businesses shut down part of that, I think there were some other issues that were involved that caused us to kind of fall apart. But I think it's time that we start looking at how we can help improve businesses in the town. I know there's an issue with different landowners that do and do not come to the table on these kinds of projects. But once again, if we don't start, we're not going to get them to participate again. So I'm in favor of us moving forward, starting this. The concern that I have is, do we have enough at this particular point to really take it out to the public? Do we have enough of a plan in place that when we do public outreach, there's something there for them to really weigh in on and provide some direction? Or are they reacting to, I'll say, hearsay information? There were issues before about, well, it's going to slow the traffic down, it's going to create these problems. I know that the Traffic Commission did take a look at this. I'm hoping that a lot of that data that they went through is still reasonably usable, even though it's been several years at this particular point, that can give us some direction. There was recently a study done that I think the Traffic Commission is now working with regarding the area around the high school and the Cerritos intersection. And hopefully, all of that dovetails into this particular project as well. We've seen developers, landowners invest in their property in other areas of the city. We're seeing that right now on Catala, in the area where Madera's and Mustard's and the other shops are. I just think we're going to see better things down the future. Can we do it all at one time? No. It is a multi-year deal, and it's going to take a while to implement everything. But it's somewhat, it's somewhat that's needed from the aspect of an identity to Los Al. Al. Meadows. We really don't have a center of town or a real identity. We talk about that stretch as being kind of downtown, but it's not really. So we have to, I think, kick into gear and start to create that a little bit. So if staff's comfortable that we have enough to take out at this particular point for public outreach, and to start to get information from the community, and I'm glad that the Chamber is supportive, and can help in that particular project, because I think they can work with the businesses as well. I know there was concerns at one point about Gonal, not necessarily being a destination point from a walkability standpoint. I think a lot of things can be done if people just start putting their thinking caps on and try to figure out how other things can occur. The old, open land property that's still open land property that's there on the Boulevard at Serpentine and Brigham and Way, you know, if something is done, it might be more attractive for a restaurant or a theater to come in, particularly with the young people that are in the town that lost that when their shops at Rossmore revitalized. I'm supportive of us at least taking this first step and moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Shelley?
The disadvantages of going last, as you guys all took my thunder. So just to clarify, the, we currently have the two lanes going north and south, that's going to stay the same. It's just going to take the extra parking lanes on each side?
A center, well, if we're talking about a center median, it's not going to take any more space than we already are using for the center median.
Okay. So, but that extra width is, in part of the plan, is to extend the sidewalks or create a bike lane?
It would be going to the sides of the road, yes. That would be a future phase, is, that's where we see the use of that land being available. And you still wouldn't be removing lanes, you'd be just removing the excess amount of square footage you're not using for lanes.
Right, which right now, that excess, I work on Serpentine, and that excess is dangerous. That parking, making that left out of Serpentine, going into the suicide lane, I do take my life in my hands a lot. And there is, because it is, cars coming from five different directions. So that is dangerous, especially at night. You know, I'm definitely supportive of this, at least to start the plan of it. Like everybody else has said, you know, this is going to take a lot of years to do. We at least need to start something, and something that's tangible, so we can start moving forward. You know, the big talk now is bikeability, the bike lane. I would definitely want to make sure that that's explored sooner as opposed to later. I know even at the state level, the bike is huge, you know, the pedestrian and the, being able to bike throughout the town. I certainly don't want to speed up Los Al. Boulevard. I mean, basically, the traffic is from the school, big school, nine months out of the year, Monday through Friday, for about three hours a day. The businesses and the residents that live here, seven days a week, year-round. So I think that's where we really want to concentrate on. And with the beautification, and as we plan forward, maybe that empty lot in Serpentine does become a prime business spot, because we have something to offer them. You know, I said it from the very beginning, one of my goals is to make sure my kids come back and live here. And this is kind of right in that line of what it should look like. I mean, we need to do, we are stagnant, we are a built-out city, so what do we do to keep people interested that we're doing things for the city, to make the city nicer for the people that are here, and the people that are going to be here in the future? And so I am in full support of this as a well-thought-out, planned approach to attract businesses, to attract residents to a built-out city that we really can't do much more with.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm also in agreement, basically. I think we're falling behind is really the big issue here. And what we're looking at here is the future of Los Al. Al. Meadows. And Stephen, a project you and I looked at in Anaheim, that took eight years, correct, to...
Yeah, that was the Packing House District.
It was just one block, basically. It took eight years to, so...
An old Packer dealership, and then on the end of that was the, what is now the Food Court, which has become pretty famous. And in between that is a farmer's market area, green space.
Okay. But the important point is that was eight years to get that done. So one of my colleagues had already mentioned, this is a long-term project. If we were to go medians separately, do we need the outreach and everything else to accomplish medians if we were, if we agree that that's the first building block?
If there was uniformity in what the center medians would include, including lighting and planting, then no, you would save your outreach money in that case, because you have enough support in the outreach you've done through the general plan and through the Compass Blueprint program, to probably package up enough opinions of whether Los Al. Al. Meadows Boulevard needs to be more attractive. I think you have the evidence documented in that. I would save your outreach money to tell people the construction's coming, like we did on Catala. I would save it for that kind, if you were just limiting it to a center median project.
Okay. You know, when I see the pictures of the other cities, there's, several of them have, you know, like that, you know, much nicer medians than we do. My fear is we're, you know, we're falling behind, as the shops at Rossmore are newer than almost anything we have. Even Hawaiian Gardens is getting a lot of money from the casino, that they're using to, you know, reinvigorate their city. Cypress, of course, has their tax dollars on the other side of us. So it's, at least the base isn't remodeling, it's the only side we're not being attacked on. But for our businesses in the long term, and I think Troy touched on this, and Warren, you know, that going forward, we're going to, we're going to have to compete. That's, I think, to me, the real message here. Almost kind of like a field of dreams, build it and they will come kind of thing, that, you know, if you're looking at something like this in the picture, you know, maybe there's some incentive for the property owners to start reinvigorating their 50-year-old buildings and going from there. I do have several questions, but I think I can get them answered, you know, individually without taking everybody's time.
I do want to mention, though, if you're talking about medians, you know, if you want to go with them, forget, we have two options of medians, either curvilinear one, or the straight one. And if you want to do the curvilinear one, there's a lot of impacts, and how do you pick who gets the curve and who doesn't, and where it goes? And so it's not quite as, quite a slam dunk as the straight median islands. The straight median island's pretty slam dunk. You could do that without any problem.
Could you explain the advantage of a curvilinear?
It's more of a...
Advantage or long word? Use whatever word you like.
Okay.
Why do people do it, I guess, is what I'm asking?
The curvilinear is to create a street that is just not a boring straight line. You know, a lot of streets like meander around. It also provides certain properties with larger, if we wanted to expand the sidewalk, it would provide certain properties with, that would expand aside, one side and keep it smaller on the other side. Like if you're going to go by the Edison property, they don't need a bigger sidewalk. They don't need anything in front of it, put it on the other side. You know, but there's, you'd have to go up and down the Boulevard and see, well, where would that best fit?
I see.
One of the, part of the public outreach was if we were going to go with the curved versus the straight, which was the direction of the City Council back at the time, really kind of pushing the curvilinear, is to see what businesses felt about having more sidewalk in front of them or not, and kind of look at how we could make that best fit. You know, that would really, was never done. If you're just going to go a straight reach, now that having a median island versus either straight or curved, it will still help with the flow of traffic. It will, it'll serve that. If you did the curve without doing much on the sides, it would, it would kind of look a little funny, without, you know, not being a flow. It would just, it would, it seemed like you have, you're just moving the traffic back and forth. and forth. So it would, it would have kind of a funny concept that that was all you were going to do. But if it was a plan of attack and you had a reason for it, then that would be okay.
Okay. Speaking for myself, I really, I just can't grasp the curvilinear need. And I think it's a much harder sell for the community if you just have straight lines. As I envisioned this, if we were to do the medians and planters, then possibly Phase Two would be the sidewalks, the bikeability, the walkability. And if I'm, please tell me if I'm correct, and I know bluntness is not in the handbook for the employee longevity, but, but please feel free to, in this case, to tell us if we're wrong, that could we do two phases? That, you know, the medians, as I understand, aren't going to really impact the traffic on the street other than the safety issues. People can't cut across everywhere. But you will have the beautification, but if we do a straight street, then nothing stops us from improving the sidewalks later on. Is that correct?
Correct. This does not make you go back and fix something that you just spent money on. You would try to include the lighting, the big lighting spans down the center median and then the decorative posts in Phase Two on the sidewalks.
Okay.
But you're not including the lighting in the sidewalks yet because that's a future phase. So we've put a lot of thought into, if we gave you a shopping list of six things to do in your first four years, here's your CIP that we see, here's the funding sources that we see, here's your opportunity, and then year five, we go to Phase Two or Phase Three or Phase Four. We really do see this as a capital improvement plan to improve the Boulevard. And that's a format that you're very familiar with.
Yeah.
You've seen capital improvement plans come to you with the sheets that describe the project, that describe the money, describe the funding, how much is towards engineering, how much is towards design, how much is towards future maintenance. And if we wrap it up in that kind of way, I think the public and the council could understand it better in order to sell it, if you need to sell it. But a center median, we've done center medians in the city without trying to obtain...
Outreach.
A contest, a favorability contest.
What, what would be the advantage, if any, of another study, spending the $40,000 on outreach?
I don't see a disadvantage if the center, I don't see an advantage if the center median is your first project. If you're instructing me to go spend $40,000 on whether a center median is acceptable, I think that's not the best use of our funding. Remember, you said I could be candid.
Please.
Now, when you get to sidewalks and you get to things in front of businesses, I think it's a different animal. I think there you are making concessions, you are, you're talking to owner, property owners as well as shop users, which many times are not the same. And you need a more precise outreach. What kind of materials do you want? Where do you want your bench? Where do you don't want bench? Have you included the defense mechanisms for sidewalk skateboarders? All of those things. You get into that. Right now, you're, you're being, you're, if you were to do this, you know, Troy earlier talked about the, the ability to travel along 120-foot wide street, I don't have batteries in here, 120-foot wide street. Imagine that crosswalk with that safe place to wait in the middle of your path, getting over from Green Street to Shenandoah. This, you can feel a little more safe in. This you can identify with. But on the right, you see a bump out where that signal is. That could be Phase Two or Three or Four. Right now, we're just concentrating on the left side and that center median.
Those, do the medians, I don't see how, but they're going to ask, do the medians impact parking negatively anyway?
No, there's, there's nothing to do with center medians and parking, just the flow of traffic. And you'll see in the staff report, there's a page in there that has the pictures of the center medians and some of the information regarding center medians and what it does to traffic. I think when you get into the right side of this road or this concept, that's when you get into parking.
Do medians hurt traffic or help?
They help traffic. They help traffic flow and provide a better direction for where the traffic is going. It provides you more of a sense of protection when you're in that fast lane.
Yeah, I mean, that's a much more appealing picture than being in front of Gonal and trying to get over.
Exactly. And you know, what does happen is you restrict movement, but restricting movement is what helps traffic flow better. Everyone can't make a U-turn anywhere they want on Los Alas Boulevard in the future if this is the way it goes, which, like it or don't like it, helps traffic move. But as Dave said, in the 2008, I was in that outreach meeting where Bill Huber held a meeting with the businesses along Los Alas Boulevard, both property owners. And the major objection is they didn't want cars going 60 miles an hour past their business.
Yeah. I don't think that's much of a danger on that street too much of the time, but without presuming that everybody agrees with me, if we were going to go the median route, what would be the process from here?
Also, well, one thing, just if you're going to go the median route and we have, and you want to determine if you're going to hold on the $40,000 for outreach until maybe Phase Two, determine one thing, whether the council wants it straight or curvilinear. That would be, I think, one key piece. And then we have $40,000 budgeted for either current outreach or future outreach. And then we have $160,000 left out of the $200,000 that we could do a study for the median. And then we go look for funding. That would, I think that's, those are the phases initially.
Absolutely.
Yeah. What we would, if our takeaway today was, give us a CIP worksheet on a center median that's the straight version. We've ruled out the curvilinear as being a little too difficult to manage. The straight version, we would bring back either in a meeting that you want earlier or as part of next year's CIP. And we'll put it in year one, design, year two, build. And we'll show you the money's used for both of those categories. And then we'll also start revving up, and we've already initiated our discussion with OCTA for funding. Dave will take that to another level now that he knows he has council support to explore that a little bit more.
Can you verbally kind of lay out the money we're talking about to, to build a median and where it comes from?
Dave, what was the total design and construction amount of center medians, not including sidewalks or panels?
Well, I don't think I broke it up quite that. Well, roughly where we had the $500,000 before, that was to build median islands and the restriping. Restriping is a very small cost of that $500,000. So I would ballpark $500,000. When we looked at the whole project out here, which included, you know, everything in the book, it was, it was over $4 million in that, you know, not including pedestrian bridges or things like that. There was approximately of that $4, $4 million, there was over $1 million in fancy treatments of the streets, the interchanges, the sidewalks, you know, instead of concrete, you got pavers and all that stuff. I mean, we were going to have like a, like you talked about, a shopping list of, you know, if you want to have a basics, you know, median island, $500,000. If you want to redo all the curbs and gutters and do all that stuff, and then you start adding a lot of money.
And moving storm drains and...
Oh, yeah. You have to shift a bunch of things like that.
Is there money available? And please, if you guys want to jump in, jump in. Is there money, is there money available? Where do we get it from?
Well, as in before, OCTA has special projects that you can apply for and just like we did on there. And it was to increase the flow of traffic through the city and by putting median islands in there and restriping. And that's what OCTA likes to see. If we were going to say we're going to do something to slow traffic down, they would say, and then go get your money from somewhere else.
So there was restriction on the money spoken about before with a third lane?
Well, that was part of the initial grant that we applied for. It was median islands plus three lanes on each side. We went back to them after the businesses didn't want the third lane and said, hey, if we leave it two lanes, can we still put the median island there? We still pay for it. And they said, yes, because that helps the flow of traffic. So we can go and back to apply for them. I met with OCTA, it was like we can have two weeks ago, and said that we were going to start discussing this project again and kind of we went over it. She just kind of said, well, this time, make sure you know what the city wants before you apply for the funds again, because I don't, they don't want to give us money and have it taken back again.
Okay.
Warren? So if I may, I think, though, the real desire from staff is not to do a piecemeal, put it together and not to, correct me if I'm wrong, right? I mean, I think you look at the whole end-to-end, Cattella to Cerritos Boulevard. But that said, I did want to ask some questions, David, if I may, on the, to your best knowledge, the speed limit from Cattella up to Cerritos is what, 35? Is that 35 zone?
It's 35. I want to, I'm guessing.
And that's what I think it is, right?
I think it's 35. I know it's 40.
40 below.
It's 40 below, but I think up above there it turns to 35. And we changed Cattella all the way to 40 through the whole city.
So we're talking from Cattella up to the high school, 35?
Yeah.
And it'll stay 35 in the, whatever, curvilinear?
Right, we would not change that.
Okay. So, and then I think the part about the median, I would hope that we could apply for that with the, maybe not with having the final design concept, but at least knowing that there's this funding, then that's one step of the, whatever the way to get there to the other. But the two left turn lanes from Los Alas North at Cerritos, wasn't that part of, that was part of one of the studies? I remember that because there's a need for that. There's not enough capacity there to turn.
Right. And that was in the traffic study that went to the subcommittee but never made it to the Traffic Commission. So the Traffic Commission has not seen the study on that. And it made recommendations. We are, we are currently looking at, like I say, that we're studying the traffic flow around all the schools north of Cattella Avenue. And one of the recommendations up there is to make, you know, double left turns coming in, matter of fact, throughout most of that intersection to help the flow of traffic in there. So it's, it's being recommended again. So the key here now, we have this study plus the one we did before, is combine everything and make sure that no matter what we do, it's all going to work.
And then I think the other question that the mayor had on the median not, doesn't, not impacting traffic, let me, let me turn it around. How can you use a median to help, I mean, parking? The median doesn't impact parking. Let me turn it around. What can you use the median to enhance parking? Is there, you know, what have, you know, creative thoughts about you have on that?
I've seen parallel parking on center medians and then sidewalks down center medians.
Yeah.
I don't think I would recommend it for this Boulevard. It takes some serious width to get that. Where have I seen it?
Newport.
Yeah, Newport Balboa. They capitalize upon that center median. You're semi-quasi-residential neighborhoods, though.
On Hawthorne, they have regular lots, Hawthorne Boulevard.
Yeah.
Right? It's a big Boulevard. I don't think we have that kind of space. But I challenge you to consider those ideas instead of just putting some green space in between with concrete or whatever. I mean, those are, I think, ideas that would help the community, help the businesses along the way on that type of usage.
Yeah. And not to sound narrow-minded, but back when we were given direction, we were told curvilinear option is what you preferred, you know.
I understand.
Get it going.
There's some pluses to that, too. I think the extending of the sidewalks out for potential business use to expand their business, which is not a, you know, a bad thing, but I remember that coming up.
This, the straight version gives more equality and less preference to be given to any one business. It kind of creates an easier slate for you to make decisions on because you know everyone has the same opportunity for widening their sidewalk in front of their business.
Please.
Yeah. Couple things, the curvilinear versus the straight line. I'm convinced Rich doesn't like it because he's a CPA and he likes straight lines, but...
I know that's true.
Yeah. So I, but a couple things, that was a joke, Rich. I think that, you know, definitely this project qualifies with OCTA, they have a couple different funding sources. One of them has to do with the arterial flow on Cattella. That's how we got smart street funding, all of that. That grant process, usually we would have to apply now for next year. I also would just remind the council, you know, looking at this as a center medium design is one thing. You know, Councilmember Gross has always talked about the movement of City Hall and, you know, the financing down the road. My question to staff is, do cities ever package CIPs into major projects like we did at the Sand District or at some of the other larger organizations and put together funding through bonds, et cetera?
Well, they have actually, and they've gone through assessment districts, they've gone through, you know, for the whole city versus just spot business districts in the past. We don't have the redevelopment agency anymore. That was a big way we used to get a lot of funding for downtown projects and stuff like that, you know. But those are gone now, you know. So, but there are, but it's like you have to bond it with a certain sense of, you know, where the revenue's coming from.
Right. Well, you know, but if you could also say, we took 4.5 million dollars of COPS bonds or certificates of occupancy or participation for a park that really didn't have a revenue source either, right? So, you know, my, my point is that there's an opportunity, you know, while we're looking at City Hall, I think from my perspective, hearing the mayor very focused on, hey, move this forward, the center median seemed really straightforward. The second part is Phase Two funding. And Phase Two funding is part of the ad hoc group for what are we going to do with City Hall in the future? We should be trying to think about how we package a Phase Two in, you know, coordination with what we're trying to do with City Hall. They're both capital improvement projects. The second thing is that, one of the ideas that came up in 2009 when we talked through this project was that doing a center median and also utilizing striping to mimic potentially what the construction would be on the side, the knockout perspective, controlling some of the, the dangerous situations like the, if you're going southbound on Los Alas Boulevard at the Sausalito where people make that, that death turn there. Those types of things, we, you know, you can, if we were thoughtful about it, even in this picture, you know, marking off specifically where the parking is and, you know, really trying to get a smart feel of almost a proof of concept idea through paint versus concrete might be an idea, something to consider. But, yeah, yeah, Mayor, I'm very excited that, you know, your focus on really trying to make improvements. And I do think, you know, the, the design decision really, for some of us, wasn't the big part of it. I think the big part of it was we've got to start somewhere and we need to make sure that it's not throwaway, that it's something that can be built on. I absolutely think that the linear, the curvilinear design really creates some stakeholder management issues with the businesses. Because although Josh talks about the Chamber being very supportive, believe me, the next phase of this on who gets what is not going to be as smooth. And you add a little bit of discourse there with potential impact for the traffic flow based on a traffic study that nobody but Warren and I have seen back in 2009. You know, there's a great story there. I'd love to be able to talk about it, at least publicly disclose it, on how to be able to attack this. But, you know, people are going to pick up on, you're doing anything to that street. I mean, I remember the election 2010 and 12, people are like, you're serious? You're going to do something to narrow flow? It's like, no, you don't get it. If you've seen that traffic study. And I think that's what part of, you know, Warren said, hey, what do you expect to get out of this outreach? And I think a little bit of it was to educate the community is it's going to be okay. Mathematically, it will be okay. It's, it's what intuitively seems to be a problem versus the reality of what is a problem. And so, but I do think that if we were able to get some support, you know, for the medians first and use that money in the outreach on the harder part, I think that'd be a very wise idea and very progressive and a lot more than I expected that we'd be able to get done in this discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
The concern I have over the linear versus the curvilinear type approach, and I recognize that there's going to be some areas, Dave mentioned, you don't need a lot of space in front of the Edison Power Substation. Right practically next to that is a, is a business and then a motel, which I don't see using a lot of the sidewalk really in either one of those. So moving that direction in that area isn't a problem. But if you've got two lanes coming westbound off of Cerritos, going down there, then you do have some issues in some respects just with the existing businesses that are there. My, my concern a little bit is by staying straight and parallel down, I don't want to give us, I don't want to get away from the opportunity to widen the sidewalks and put some of the furniture that's identified here, whether it's planters or benches, creative type furniture out there. It, it kind of somewhat changes the potential. We don't know who's going to come into the, to the lot, if you will, the Lou Web lot. If that had a wider frontage in the front of it where a developer coming in could take advantage of that... take advantage of that, to me, that's a big help as well. The other part of this is to do anything really in that downtown area, we've got to kind of look at a parking issue from the standpoint. Do we partner with the plaza that's there at the corner and that landlord and the parking he has and the small parking that the city has, and look at some way to create a, another type of parking structure that helps service that particular area? Because if we're going to do anything down there, that has to be part of our discussions and part of our thinking. If staff doesn't see a problem staying lineal, to be able to continue to do some of that like we've talked about, then I really don't have an issue with it. I see no problem for not going forward with the medians in the way that mayor's talking about. I just don't want to limit us.
If I could, that's a good point. If I could show you this top drawing, ignore the bottom one for a second, this top drawing, shows an 11-foot median, an 11-foot travel lane, a 12-foot travel lane, and then eight-foot parking, then a 21 to 23 and 1/2-foot sidewalk. You've not lost your right-hand turn lane when you need it, you have not lost your parking, you've not lost lane number one or lost number two. That's the excess space that we have there to build 21 to 23 and 1/2-foot wide sidewalks in front of property owners' property. So that shows you that even if we went a 13-foot median, 11, 12, 8, you just get shorter sidewalks, but not shorter than they are today, shorter than 21.
Could you tell us where we are today for comparison purposes?
Yeah, you're right here, oh.
Now it works.
Now, yeah, now it works. Right now, you're 73 feet curb to curb. And you see the future? 73 feet curb to curb. No, no, I'm sorry, Dave, that's not correct. Dave, what's the curb to curb today, 120?
Your total rideaway is 120.
Total rideaway from city's property to city's property, which in, let's say Kathy McNally's stage is her front door.
Yeah.
So it's... You roughly have two 10-foot sidewalks the other side.
Dave says it's about 10-foot wide each. So you'd go to 21 to 23 in certain areas.
And you could still fit a bike lane in with the parking or even with the sidewalk-type thing?
The bike lane would probably be a reason to decrease the size of the eventual sidewalk, but you would probably only do bike lanes on, well, you'd probably do them on both sides.
Well, the...
How many feet is a bike lane?
Dave? Well, I would say the study here actually said the main bike lane would be over on Chestnut, not going up parallel to the Los Albe Boulevard.
Which connects to the county program, which connects to Rossmore. It comes up the streets behind the Boulevard.
And actually, it was in the alley between Chestnut and Los Albe Boulevard.
Is there a magic about an 11-foot median could do 8? I mean, is there, is there an advantage?
It's a, the more, it depends on the beautification. You go more if you want greener, if you want a greener presence in a concrete jungle, it really does help.
Yeah.
The thinner you go, the less room you have for movement when you do have a left-hand turn pocket. So you want to make sure it has that left-hand turn pocket. Your car's in the left-hand turn lane, you don't want just a concrete curb to your left, you want a little green space there, too. So eight-foot car, about three feet landscaping still, you'd actually may want to explore going wider than 11 to really get that sense that it's a grand Boulevard one day.
So what we can figure out as we go along, what we feel is the optimum for working in the bikes, the parking, and the median?
What we would have Dave do is revise this based on the wishes of the city councils. You can really see how it applies. And what he would do, he wouldn't do a fictional version, he'd do it in front of a store that you know, put a store here that you know, maybe Southland, maybe Kathy McNally's McNally Lighting, and go from there and really show you how it applies through both an aerial and a cross-section version here, before and after.
Dave, on the lanes, what's the big and small of a traffic lane?
Well, you can, you can go down to a 10-foot lane if you're straight.
Okay.
If you're going through curves, you need to have a minimum of 11, and actually, it's preferred 12 for the big trucks, because big trucks don't make even the gentle curves, they don't make those too well, and they start to encroach on other lanes. So 11-foot is their minimum for that. If you've been on a freeway where they're doing construction, they narrow it down to 10 feet, you feel it.
Yeah.
And you don't like it, and it makes you drive slower.
And it's a traffic calming device.
It kind of is, all on its own. But when we looked at the curves, we actually looked at the large trucks going up and down it and how much room they needed and to make sure that the curve wasn't too tight.
Does, could I just ask, does anybody favor curves? Not really. Ask you guys a question on the bluntness here. Are we making a mistake not going curve in your professional opinion?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, again, it becomes a stakeholder issue that you can't manage everyone's needs.
Okay.
It'll make our job a lot easier if you go straight. How about that way?
Shelley, any comments?
I mean, I think if we could just, in Phase One, just really focus on, and even publicly, just Phase One is medians only. We have this vision of downtown, we don't know what it's going to look like at the end, but this is a great start. Linear, not reducing streets with the plans of Phase Two, Three, Four, and Five. It's something that we know the who, the what, the where, the why, the how, and we can get done, and we're actually doing something. We've got a potential OCTA funding. We've answered all the questions, and if we keep looking at, well, what's it going to look like at the very end, we're never going to get Phase One done. And I would be in favor of that, because there's a lot of things I have on my wish list on Serpentine and some of the little death traps down there. But this is, everybody agrees on this, it's linear, it's going to do what it's supposed to do, and it's a great step towards our overall picture, whatever that may look like in the next few years. So I would be in support of...
Could I ask, does everybody agree?
I agree, but I think messaging is critical. Dean made the point earlier that we got off a little bit of a bad start before, and I think it's because we didn't really have a clear, concise, and not to make it too complex, I mean, the press release that would, what did we decide or what ends up coming through, maybe not tonight, maybe it's our CIP process when we go through our budgeting, we actually commissioned this project. But we had to be very smart about, and maybe that messaging comes back to the council during the budgeting process of, what are the three points that we really want to talk about to make sure that we don't send the wrong message? And how does this project fit in the bigger picture? And why is this something that won't be thrown away down the road? All of those things, I think, and, you know, and probably the far-reaching connect dot that I think maybe for Dean isn't that far-reaching is, how does this project in Phase Two connect to potential other bigger moves like City Hall, et cetera? But without getting so grandiose, it sounds crazy.
Yeah, so I think the, what I'm hearing here that I would support is the study, well, go out and get monies to do this, not go out and start doing it, right? So is that clear to staff? It's go apply for the grants? And then I think, I would like not to give the absolute direction to make it straight. I think, let's get the money first, find out what should be done, because I think in the overall scheme of things, the grand endpoint, what does that need to look like? And I think, you know, address those stakeholder issues. But I think the one thing, of course, is parking, you can't detract from parking. I know that was the curvilinear was going to impact that, so potentially impact that. But then, the challenge in that is, I think on, obtain the funding, bring it back here, seek direction and input from us to the extent of our druthers, but perhaps, I would also challenge you, what are the innovative ways that we can actually improve the flow of traffic during peak times, such as perhaps a convertible third lane? Is that something that's doable on a Boulevard such as this? Where, you know, during, I'll say the peak school time, at least in the morning, no parking, you have it as a lane, and then after nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, it's parking and you're stuck with that. So I don't know, I'll challenge you to consider those kind of maybe innovative things that we can do that would help. But I think it'll still come back to the speed limit or the, the speed limit should be around 35. I mean, I know people are going to go through fast, people are going to go through slow, it's just the human nature, but I don't know how you regulate that, but I think that anything we can do to those folks, when you get their students up to the high school, I think we need to fair up with you to help, but they have to recognize, you know, again, if there's a capacity to the street, it's the capacity, so, but I'll challenge you to kind of think about those things as well. Thanks.
Can I just make one? Perhaps we could, during the budget process and during the CIP discussion, talk about the $160,000 and the $40,000 and how we might propose to spend that on design and how we might propose to bring a calendar and a timeline back to the council with the steps just within that scope? And then we could get the feedback from the council on other innovative ideas or things that we want to do as we go forward. Dave, can you just talk briefly on the, how we might be able to use that for design for the full project and then go out and look for the funding for the construction itself, timing-wise?
Oh, timing-wise? Well, OCTA has a yearly call for projects on a variety of things. I'll have to look up and see if this one's gone by or not for the median islands. And you basically write a report, you don't have to do a pre-design for it, but you have to come up with a concept, which we basically have the data for and the traffic study for. It'd be easy to submit a project, we're going to go after. You get the money, it may take a year to get the money, you may take two years to get the money, it depends on how, what the demand is for their special funds. So you compete for it. And sometimes you get extra points if you contribute some of the money from your own funds to use, which would take us a couple years, because we have our funds pretty much committed for the next couple of years with some of the other money that grant money that we have. We've got that $400,000 grant we're going to do for arterial highway for Cerritos Avenue, and we're going to spend $400,000 of our money. That's going to take our account down to pretty much, you know, near the bottom. And if we have to then contribute some money to compete favorably for a job, that may take us another year after that to get the money up in there. So let me, let me look at that. What I'll do is go meet with OCTA and get examples of cities that have just applied for median island projects, just like we're talking about, and how much money they got, and what was their pluses and minuses? And I can use that to, you know, what we're going to do in the timeframe and some other stuff like that, I can report back.
City manager, the inner budgeting process, we planned for $200,000 for this project, but we did not appropriate it. But I would just ask, David, when you go down to CTA, if I remember right, that grant was conditional on matching funds. I can't remember.
Yeah, I didn't look at the details, though. I don't remember that.
But if it is, you have, you have an actual place on the budget, it's not appropriated, that shows that, well, this council has provided $200,000 of backing for a future.
I was not thinking about that.
Yes, so please.
Yeah, but, and the $40,000 has been appropriated, and if we're going to delay spending that on outreach for future phases, we might consider shifting that to monies that you need on the front end as well.
They just want to see that you'll be committed if they have, because a lot of times, that type of money is matching. And so if you, even though, guys, we're not spending it, it's, but it's still there, and it's one of the reserve amounts that we put aside.
You guys have enough to get the ball rolling?
Sure.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Good input, very valuable.
We'll move on to item five. Carrie, we haven't forgotten you. You're up.
City council is asked to meet in closed session regarding one item of anticipated litigation. This is pursuant to section 5495, 6.9, sub D, sub 4.
Thank you.